When the four percent plus or minus for the building project actually gets sent to the townspeople in the form of a tax increase, I don't know whether that's in fourteen or whether depending on when the bond goes through with some of the reversals come in and then when there's a net number that will have a, is it fourteen or is it fifteen? I'm thinking it's probably fourteen.
There's a lot of confusion there.
But you know what, all of our fourteen is what they're talking about. So there's four percent there plus or minus. And the folks at this point, without dealing with kindergarten or speech, are looking at three percent. And at the same time, we've got a kindergarten, two kindergarten classes with nine and ten students. There are no class sizes like that. I don't believe in Rhode Island or Massachusetts. Probably not even in exclusive private schools. There are some realities there that need to be, need to be looked at. Grade, grade one is twenty-two students.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay, twenty-three, so it's eleven and twelve.
Twelve.
Which, those are, those are telling numbers and really need to be, we really need to be thought about and it's one of the things that over the next month or two, I think I have to think about. If we have to do things like that in order to have a responsible budget, then I wish that we could do it through a trishum, but doesn't look like it's going to go that way. On the flip side, we are one of the top performers in the state. Number one, number two, number three, number four, depends on the different subject areas, depends on the year, but I can tell you that asking some questions, the schools that we kind of compete with in that top five don't have class sizes like here. And I can tell you, these my experience in Massachusetts, that nothing close in your top schools in Mass, which are the most high performing schools in the United States, something we gotta look at. I mean, I think we also have to look at the lunch thing. I mean, it seems to me work.
It hasn't worked.
It seems to be, as appropriate, it doesn't seem to be working. Now, if I'm hearing on one hand, not the best of lunches, and it seemed to be kind of pressing, I mean, is there another way of doing it? I don't know.
This is, this is a bridge area and we're gonna do some accommodations.
We do.
That will be managed first.
One is that we have contracts.
Okay, I understand. There's also another thing, and I won't say who forwarded an email to me yesterday, but it was a very, very, very valid question. Assuming we move back in FY14 into this will movement, man done, whether it be April or whenever, you're gonna have a media sector library, you're gonna have a science lab, classroom, and it doesn't make a whole hell of a lot of sense to me to have a, a, a nice, a nice building with four, four walls and not the appropriate equipment for 21st century learning. There's right now happening bookless libraries where there are e-readers, computers, and printers. When I was a young student, I didn't learn that way. The fact of the matter is, that's the way kids are learning today. The e-readers are gonna be things that people get with their textbooks on it, with their outside reading books, with even books they're interested in, out there, taking them home and a whole bunch of other stuff. It seems to me if we're gonna have a science lab where we want inquiry and things like that, we probably should have state-of-the-art equipment that allows them to do those kinds of things. And so, at some point, and I don't know whether it's FY14 or FY15, or maybe it's a combination of over two years, that we put some money aside that might be just labeled as one-time moving back to what would be man money or fun, I mean, or a lot of things. But I have to tell you, these are things that we need to think about, are the way that these two grades here. And, and, and the fact of the matter is, we learn very differently from the kids who today. And you go to BCC, just to do some research, it's down in Fall River, and you don't see many books, you see a lot of computer stations, you see a whole lot of printers, and people are getting the information they need to do things, just doing it differently.
That was one of the things that we thought for a long time, a lot of the leaders in the job.
Yep.
And we got a lot of flack for doing that, so.
So I guess my point is, is maybe we need to also, rather than we need to have the four walls, we need to think about what we're putting inside those four walls.
Those are all good points for discussion. I think we are in a very dynamic year.
We are dynamic.
Yes, and as I stated before, I hate the spot for this matter, you know, very well don't picture, so.
Let me just say that before we start, and then I'll show you. First of all, three years that I've been, we have level funded. I think we have worked extremely elaborately and tonically with the commission for three years. This is the first time for asking for an increase. I do think it's justified, I do think this is a new budget. We are thinking about those things. I just had a conversation with David Nagler, who was over talking to John, and he talked about upgrading the wiring that they're going to install in this building, and John has agreed to work on that through the technology grant from the state, which has to reduce the infrastructure for $60,000. So instead of putting in the middle of the road wiring, we are going to put in the optic wiring that we should have. We are also going to be coming to you with our rural grant that we get every year. Now, that's the grant that we pay for our iPads with. We have six cots of iPads, twenty-five to eight cot. You have a whiteboard in every single classroom in this building, that's not boards, you've done one new thing over the year with the technology. This year, in coordination with Mr. Aluda and the teachers, they want to get a laptop cot now in preparation for going into the cots. Yes, we can use the iPads, but the laptops are better for students' needs as we move into the cot testing. So with the rural grant this year and with the rural grant next year, we can provide technology as we go forward. It's not like we're not thinking about those things. We are thinking, and his part of this budget, and the grant money that you don't necessarily see in the budget.
We did the, I'm sure that we had a plan that had a space for the science lab, and we knew that we would have to face an unpopular, the, the, whatever, there's numerous ways to go about that. And, and we really don't wanna forget, I, I really stress, well, let's see, the science that we want to forget, and depending, the other kids, possibly just went down to Washington DC, and then maybe we are, of those types of classes provides a strong base, and they give the kids the ability to get up in front of people in the phone, and just those personalities are so well. And, and again, a few times, I think they do that, a strong system going, I think we collaborate very well, and we need to really struggle with that, especially in Virginia, where we're just on more, and what's the, there's other reasons for expenses and things. Go ahead.
I just wanted to basically echo the statements that this is probably made up by the first year. And as Mr. Quinn, this woman, does some research, I've been very, very positive about what is taking place because as you look at other schools, we are doing tremendously well, we are fighting their cats. You look to the very, you know, right there with that, they also have small class sizes when it comes to kindergarten, first of all, very, well, justice mechanisms, and the elementary classes. I also beg you, come into this school, come to the kindergarten classrooms, preschool classrooms, and see what is taking place for the students on a daily basis. Settle the mark and see that when there is a time that the students have the right, the students have the express themselves, I've seen some classes where there are five or six sentences being brought up by kindergarten students. You can see that there is a very strong case, and that case is gonna carry into those students right up to the fourth grade. We know that. If we start strong, we're gonna be, we're gonna be strong. That's something that we need to fight for. This is a community, if they wanna value education, we're gonna carry that burden, if you may call it, make sure that our students are top students. We are doing well, we can do great. There are many other things that we still can do about what we are doing. You know very well that you sit at the courts of the school committee and see what is being done with the little campus students. We have the smart boards, we have the computers, we have the iPads, we need the instructors to go with those, we need, we need professional development, and these teachers have taken a lot of it this year. I've walked back on files, and in the past seven years, this school has not had professional development, and they haven't this year. We are already looking, we sat down today, and I've told some of my teachers already, what we are looking for, and they asking for some of this. It's not that we are forcing professional development. I'm working harder because they are asking for me to, to get these sources into this school in order to be better provide a, an education for all the students. So the theme is here, the sentiment is here, the hardworking, the hardworking people are here, we need to move along. This is a school that has a tremendous amount of capabilities, and there is a lot more to grow within this school. And we need you to work together with us at this, so we can move forward into a very prosperous 214.
I'm not, and, and.
We're, we're.
And I'm not thinking, oh, well, we have to level fund again, and that's, I'm looking at, what do we need?
To get a decision.
To get the decision to do the job. The fact of the matter is, is the last three years, we have level funded, and there were virtually no developments that have done the same, because what happened to this is the pension, the FICA, and the healthcare is all separate warrants, and they, those are the nine hundred pound gorillas in the room, and they go up, but they don't seem to, yeah, there is one place where it kind of reflects what those costs do, particularly the primary budgets, but ours are part of our budget, our pension, our FICA, and our healthcare. And so, we are really, we really level funded, rather than the, not exactly by the same definition, level funded.
There's another, another number that came up last night that was interesting to me, plays in this, I think, and it's the percentage of students receiving special education services right now. We're sitting at somewhat over 24% of our students, and we see it's impressive that. What's left, on the other hand, is a little over 16%. And when we started talking about this and questioning it, it, it came down to, I, I think, language literacy and things in the early years, and we cater to those students, and that's why they need to head start and get the attention, so, I mean, I certainly support your positions, and we just need, you know, we're not talking about busting a cap here, and a lot of those certainties, we do need to make sure that we've got efficiency, but we've got to keep the education standard as high as, high as we can, and again, I'm just not one to distract them, at least at this point, and, and we really need, I, I think we referenced that Fred had got a good number on the population, who's a, who's a.
And talk about the efficiencies, that number is highest for our size. Mr. Aluda and staff here, the new director, is looking at all of our IDPs and reviewing them to make sure that they are written properly, is given to our getting the services, not getting too little, they're not getting too many, so we are looking at efficiencies. We know there are some areas we can improve, and we are looking at all those areas, and Mr. Aluda has taken a lead on that, and our teachers have helped in that, so we are looking, no, I'm just saying, and we are looking at that.
But I'm not looking at that as a negative, I'm looking at it as a positive.
But I'm saying that is a real part, and it brings a red flag, it's not like there's more, I mean, we're looking to make sure that it's an accurate number.
Well, we don't, child and speech, or anything like that, that is not a huge expense, there is special ed goals.
You need to be assured that we are constantly looking at.
Absolutely.
We are sending meetings, we see what is happening, it's not that a document was drafted, and that document kept for years and years, we are constantly questioning what is taking place, and I presume that's the best situation possible, and how is it we can.
I think, I wrote a, a growing hope somewhere, I know we had a lot of discussion, estimating efficiencies, and we thought, I, I think we're in one of the only regionalized areas in the state, or a special ed. Individual district cost per student, if it's applied, individual district is about forty thousand. Regional cost per student, which is us, grand from A to D to twenty-five, so we're already at about half the cost of the same, the same process in the rest of the state, and a standard in the region, so, I mean, we do look at efficiencies, and we just keep, keep looking.
So before we move to the next section, we never get to what we're talking, I have one more thing to say, and that's.
I just wanted to make one common caution, we're talking about the demographics, and not that it's a big influence, but there is an influence of students not coming to the school right now because of the renovation going on, so, I just, I just wanna put that out of the word caution, because we could find out in two years after the renovation that enrollment is around.
We actually called our old schools, and, and, we're in actual preparation for 2014, and, and our values council, and I'm here, and she called for any of those to be, except renewed to the school, and actually, many of them, almost ninety-seven of them are coming back, but they're not in the lower grades, it's like more higher.
But still, but still, it's gonna affect the overall.
Oh, exactly. And just one more thing, we voted for down to the grade, the salary plus, Mrs. Told, told me, this is the first time, 25% of our A grade Spanish students next year will be going to Spanish two at Portsmouth High School, and that's a credit to Mrs. Told. All right, I'd like to move to the next.
If we look at, can they actually keep your contact? We now, and, and, you know who they are, they're the, they're the five or six towns that we compete with up in the very top tier of performance.
We already have that on the line.
We know who they are, I know who they are.
We have a number.
Yes, okay, I guess what I'm saying is, I like their class sizes. For those folks.
I anticipated this conversation with you.
Good.
We know what they are, and knowing what they are, we're still performing our condition.
I just wanted to give you that, I, I may, I may join you in that same thinking.
I doubt it, but I'm hoping.
Always, we haven't done our first page.
I know, employee salary, of course, if anybody has any questions here, that is pretty basic, it talks about our life, our dental, we're gonna look into the medical, dental, the right numbers here, survivors' benefits, FICA, Medicare, unemployment insurance, we anticipate one possibly quite tiny person being on unemployment for next year, we can have two that are still on unemployment because they extended for nine, nine weeks. So any questions on that?
No, other than, other than John checking with the foot blocking on the, on the power and the pressure is reflected to there.
The next number, operating.
Now, what we, we anticipate, you're operating at this point, additional to the unemployment because you don't know where that's going.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. Operating expenses, here, we're talking about bus monitors, I think John talked about that, we do have tutoring expenses, we are anticipating that they will still be here for next year, for that to be the student.
Well, students.
Okay, what I thought that was, is students' council, it's the tutoring place where we go, special ed, we send students who need extra services, like, it's a great place to learn, exactly. We put that in here because you never know when we are not compliant with the services required, and sometimes it isn't here, it's Portsmouth High School, and they send the students. Credit retrieval and things of that nature.
I guess my, I guess my thought, and maybe when you meet with your county special ed folks, you would think that that would somehow come under a reassessment, because it's in region things.
No, it's not. No, it's, they know we're an outside agency, and it would be like Portsmouth High School, for example, we have a student that is transported to Newport, therefore that student cannot get his resource time at Portsmouth High School. He's there in the morning, has to be transported to Newport for a technical center for his career training. He comes back, it's the end of the day, he can't get the resource time required at the IDP.
So they do it at school?
It is us, yes, they get tutors, and these tutors.
That would wonder what the.
I questioned that, when that came through, that's an example, so you better be prepared for those kinds of things. So any other, on the operating expenses that anybody would have? All right, then we'll move to the next section, operating expenses continue on that page. Despite what people said, Mr. Chester, is continually small, small services for us, we do check on that, we really do, we actually do, that is important to, wrote it to test people, you know, those kinds of things are kept, kept here, just in case we do have to treat the modules, there's sometimes issues. Any, any questions?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at travel, that, that's a huge jump.
Looking at.
Travel, I mean, twelve, it was seventeen hundred.
Where are you, where are you on travel today?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I see, seventeen point five to thirty-one thirty-eight to Portsmouth High.
Wait, is this?
That would be teachers who are going to workshops.
Eighty-seven, whatever else.
Stuff from our, yes.
I still need somebody to help me with the Newport County special, special ed data's net of the IDPA, but somehow, I'm not seeing numbers that compute for me.
Newport's definitely, the amount we pay to Newport, which is $440,000 last year for us, that way. We also pay for two teachers, three special ed.
That was the two sixty-six, but my problem is, is that the numbers here seem to be a little different than what Rachel was showing us yesterday.
I didn't know what Rachel was showing me yesterday, honestly, because if you remember that, that budget wasn't done until October of this year. I would say that these are the numbers that we paid, if you look at it.
I don't know by mind, this is what, that this is what this school is about to pay.
And when we have the new budget, I think we can show you this budget.
So when we, so when we get the new budget in March, we ought to be somewhere around that four eighty.
Well, you could go up and you could go down.
I, but I'm saying net of the, I think it was seventy thousand, which is the IDPA money, I just get that, but, it just is, the very numbers were confusing to me, yes.
It was, and they were, and I'm not sure they were exactly accurate.
Okay.
Now, here's also what you have to realize, remember last night when the chair of the school committee was talking about the cuts that occurred last year in special education teachers?
Yes.
Now, when you cut, and I couldn't get the exact number of, but when you cut that many FTEs, everybody's costs go down when that happens. Our cost went down approximately $60,000. Tim in Portsmouth Milltown went down a lot more because of the extension. However, as that chair was talking about last night, if Portsmouth decides they wanna put more teachers on, everybody's costs go up, not just the classes, okay?
But, but, but also, the question becomes, is it Newport County's special ed? Dollars are going to be their own operating.
Correct, correct, when a push comes to shove, I think it's not gonna be in their operating, but that's, we have to watch closely.
I understand.
Anytime you hire someone, everybody's bills.
I hear what you're talking about.
Okay, so just here.
Can I just, Joe, with that number, what's, are you, are you, four fifty-two, is that what it costs?
They were talking about that. Well, there were several numbers given, and we looked at them like yesterday, one was the, I think it was two sixty-six, that was our income contribution.
With the federal payroll expense was two sixty-six, first year payment, they'll do the, the fifty-two. Four fifty-two, over five forty, minus one hundred and one thousand.
Yeah, and as you were, I was having a great difficult.
Four hundred and forty thousand, a couple thousand dollars off.
Right, right. So I would go with the number that we paid on this budget sheet, those numbers that we paid for little school last time.
Okay.
And where is the $430,000 per month, that numbers go off?
Yeah.
And you let me know.
Or down.
Or down, you know.
Be down.
But I mean, when you really think about it, she's showing us about the $718,000 for Newport County, that is how, how a displacement, or some of the great place to learn, or whatever else, just, just, there's some incredible money as a percentage or just as a dollar amount.
All right, in the next line, I think as we move forward, we have our general supplies, electric supplies, athletic supplies, and here's where we have our, I love the electricity line. The modulars are new with electricity, we did get a quote from Belmont, where they were, so we have to be worried it's gonna cost us per month, what modular units, which came to be about $7,000, John, approximately, per month, just for the modulars. I also have to make sure that I have heat and electricity in this building, it'll be at a lower rate, and so John has also included that, which is why you see the increase in the electrical line.
I'm nervous that that may not be enough, because when, when big pieces of power was, was, it brought a lot of electricity, we used it here, it's not the same as what goes on on the, I don't have enough.
A lot of money. We make sure that the heat is well here, we don't hear about, we, 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 we're already stopped, you know, that's right, the boiler's already stopped, thank you. If we have, and despite another new salary here, we are ordering supplies, materials, we just can't order a lot because we have no place to store them, the modules, we didn't wanna order a lot this year, we had to move them to modules. So if teachers need them, and Mr. Aluda just sent out an email this week to all teachers, please let me know what you need from the school here, we'll one of them get them delivered here so that we can get them down to the teachers when they are out of modules. We have $50,000 in general supplies and materials for next year, again, we'll order them periodically because we, you know, we don't have storage, teachers don't have storage in the classrooms, but there is money that we have for general supplies. We're not looking at ordering any textbooks next year, except for replacement textbooks, if there's a larger number, then we'll certainly, we'll order, you know, teachers don't have, but we're not expecting, we have new textbooks in English, your softcover books, your science books, your math books, we do have to attack social studies, we thought we were going to do it this year, we're unable to with all the other things we have to do, but we will, once we're back here, we're going to be looking at social studies, but not next year because of the situation that we will be in. So we made small cuts.
We're not in trouble, we're not in trouble in that area.
No.
We can usually do it.
Exactly. So we made small cuts in these areas, but not great cuts, as you can see. Any questions on general supplies that we're required, that we need to. Any questions on general supplies, general suppliers, like, that needs to be, okay, the last two continues.
Some of these, yeah, the internet connectivity and wireless.
That's the bottom.
Some of those, yeah, some of those costs coming back for doing, we call it, and that's been separated already.
That's right. The modular classrooms on the electricity and the renovations are not in our operating budget. So, we're not trying to make a big deficit that in our operating budget. The separate, our power supply.
Just a second on the technology side with software. I know you talked about using rural grant to purchase some, I thought I should, or whatever else. Then I take it the rural grant isn't plugged into the operating budget at this point. I know the IDEA has been, but we use this year, we have a two-year grant. We got, we settled it in October, this past year, so we use it in thirteen, so I, this, that, that. You said the rural grant, in other words, they give you a total amount of money, but it's for over two years, is that our worst?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Fourteen fifteen, max, that's again.
Got it.
So, any other questions, we already looked at that down, the study supplies, things of that nature, you know, plumbing supplies, of course. As things are happening, we're getting ready, we just have a question, as I said, which went ways down, students, you know. So, we already cut down on some of those areas.
How was that, was that just rural, it wasn't cruising or anything?
Wasn't there, yeah, it was one, I wasn't there at one o'clock because I had to be in my room, check the box. And by basketball being, just paying three thirty.
It was a little bit of a moving with school.
Now, you're planning, well, clearly this building will be not something we're going to be using this summer. But the portals are being closed out in summer? Not you, it's me.
Well, we are anticipating that it will be closed, but there's air conditioning in, we'll certainly make sure that we're running the air conditioning in those rooms, but.
I understand that, I don't think that's, you know, it's about the things.
We have, sometimes, you know, we, we know we're going to some of the programs, and that's where we feel it.
A summer school, but we have to report that, we, we sometimes are going to need for that, we're not going to have that. They are going to have a special in summer school, it's a bit like they had last year, which is when you transported, we had a helping student go on and see, we found that to work.
You're applying to it. Don't look at it.
The gymnasium is going to remain open, we do have to hear, we're moving back, we actually have to move in here today. We're going to go in with him, I'll let you know what things Tommy and I, which has had to be moved down to modules. We have scheduled to be down for Tuesday and Wednesday about the end of the week. So, we should be all in there by Thursday. We're looking, scheduled to have a house on that Sunday, parents, so they can come in and just walk through the door and do bits and see.
Well, I'll get it down with, you know, the, 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 the basketball, most types of things.
When do we shut it down? Right this year, I think he said March, we have the basketball and then after that.
About the middle, we'll be done, hope for the middle of March.
Okay.
Do you know we do use that, David?
Nope.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, those other things that come up.
And graduation.
And graduation.
Now, I'm anticipating that because we're a couple of months behind with that children's deal from New George. I'm thinking, Tommy's going to talk, we're going to go around with the doctor tech, and we have some questions about some of the cabinets. So, we're going to find out and make sure that we are going to have it available until the end of June, which means our children, because that's right in the end of the school year, which would be very nice. All right, any other question on budget, what they want to ask? Then I would ask, leave that over, and that, we do questions on February sixth. I would ask my parents, I have any questions February sixth. I can't entertain individual emails, that's not appropriate, why do you, why are you turning? Right, so public session, teachers, everybody, people have a public session, I will not have report. If no spot, I got excellent, I really want to concentrate on the budget, the February sixth will be.
The, the bottom line, would you just, I don't know, I guess, any, any responses, is that what? I think, I want to, what's the difference, and I saw the previous, I was. We pull, we pull some money out of our budget, we do a separate charge number, you know, capital, capital equipment, or just the renovation fund.
That's.
Just the renovation fund that you've been tracking, nothing, nothing else. Everything costs the same, same as last year.
Yes, that's how it feels.
So, when you say three percent.
We're asking for an increase from, right, six million, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we will send that number over to the town hall tomorrow. It's just a working number, as much said.
It's crazy.
The power one. Three percent increase over last year's budget.
And, and I think what you presented us, Kathy, is probably the worst case. So, as we, as we really take a look at this, are there any problems going forward, or is there any uncertainties? Other than maybe special ed.
I want to say that that's the final, I actually looked at that special ed, I'm.
You're in special ed, you also, you, you still have one in the.
Yes, and the Jackie's home of those, right.
And, and the school science, so, you know. But I'm assuming that whatever you take away of this year, it's going to, some of that's all on the upside.
We're not, it's like. As I saw, as you presented, to me, it's a, how about, everything is a, come, come, build.
I can definitely, we did a spirited collaboration, it was pretty nice. In spirit collaborations, you know, I think we did, I think we did, the cap, as you know, is a four percent increase. This is three, we'll see the three percent, we certainly can raise it, we certainly can lower it. But I have better things for you, I think we try to be just more responsible, but at the same time, have an educationally sound program and continue with what we have.
Our educational program is the core of everything.
Yes, it is.
Maintaining a good teaching system, and that's, you know, we have, and there isn't much left, I don't think after that, the rest of it. We can, some efficiencies maybe here and there.
And you're going to have a seventh. The, the new reflection of the speech and the school science, so that we see what that does to the three percent.
And the, does John?
Not special ed, not special.
No, I understand that because if I read it correctly, it sounds to me like that's not going to happen till the end of the month.
Right, I'm ready for launch, he's going to stay.
You guys, you need one more?
Relative to our carryover, John, we would, we would, we would down, it would be some, I mean, a couple hundred thousand. As we get to the end of the year, are we still trying to hit that kind of a number?
Right now, the, the carryover, we can have a deficit for thirteen, the thirty-seven thousand.
That's it, period, that's all we have.
Is that the short that I'm telling?
That's not what I. That we started with, we didn't, we didn't buy, we didn't buy, we didn't buy. That, that's a little scary.
That, that means we both have backed up for a special ed emergency. That happened this past year.
The budget kept a lot of the, the.
What? Oh. Cash is different, it's already put in.
It is.
Say that again?
Yeah.
But not the one, not the Medicaid money we're expecting for our white more deed. That's, that's all it is.
Yeah, that, that might be a lot. Is there anything else? Anybody have any questions?
Don? No, it's not what we're looking for, it was just, thank you very much for the PowerPoint presentation, it would be amazing, it would have helped a lot for us to be able to. Yeah, it was a lot easier for us.
Do you need a question?